Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rolt.
Alderman Tobin.
Here.
Alderman Jean-François.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ram Cassoon.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
Forums president.
Correspondence.
We have a standing notice form from Fresh Time Bin Bin Food for an alcohol license.
Refer to planning.
We have a notice of a public hearing from the town of Walk Hill for a project at 249-40, I'm sorry, 238 Watkins Avenue.
Received the file.
We have a planning board notice from the city of Middletown that there will be a regular meeting on October 5th in the common council chambers. Honor as near as 7:00 PM as possible to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on an application of Louis Guzman seeking special use permit and site plan approval for a mini market located at 202-204 Wickham Avenue.
Okay, received the file.
That's it.
Okay, for the good of the city, I'd like to call the chief up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Before I begin tonight's recognition, I'd like to thank Mayor DiStefano, the common council, and the police commission for providing me with this opportunity to publicly recognize nine members of Middletown Police Department on their recent promotions. I would also like to thank the family members, friends, city residents, and the members of the Middletown Police Department who have joined us here this evening to honor and celebrate the accomplishments of these amazing individuals. Over the past year, in addition to the numerous challenges policing faced related to COVID, bail reform, and criminal justice reform, our department, just like many other police departments, faced staffing challenges associated with retirements. In this short period of time, the city of Middletown Police Department had nine senior members of the police department retire. Those nine members collectively had more than 190 years of police service, and they held leadership roles within our department. There's no doubt these retirements had an impact on our organization, but as these honored members continued on their life's journey, they paved the way and created opportunity for others, which brings us here this evening to honor and recognize the nine members of the Middletown Police Department that have been promoted into the leadership roles over the past several months. I would now like to invite lieutenants Eric Harget, Patrick Cunningham, George Valentin, along with sergeants Charles Petron, Jordan McInerney, Scott Gallagher, Kristen Beebe, Robert McCann, and Jason Bodett to come forward. Still working on the discipline. In a few moments, I will officially pin each of them, but I would, ah, I'm sorry, I would first like to provide a brief overview of each of their careers thus far. And just before we begin also, just a quick breakdown of what their new roles are. The members that have been promoted to lieutenant, that is the highest ranking position in the police department, they are responsible for ensuring that the department is moving in the right direction, and it is one of the top ranked, they are now one of the top ranking members in the department. The sergeants are the first-line supervisors. They have the most important role. They're responsible for motivating, molding, and training officers to meet the goals of the department and to mentor our future leaders. I'll begin with Lieutenant Eric Harget. Lieutenant Eric Harget is a 14-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. He started his career with MPD on July 14, 2008. During the course of his tenure, Lieutenant Harget held many positions, to include narcotics officer, which also included the extremely difficult assignment of being an undercover police officer. He was also a police instructor, drug recognition expert, patrol sergeant, accreditation manager, and tax sergeant. He's also the recipient of numerous awards and commendations, to include being honored as one of the top performers in DWI arrests within Orange County. On January 20, 2022, Eric was promoted to the rank of lieutenant and was immediately appointed to the very important role of Bureau Commander of Services, where he will serve as the administrative lieutenant overseeing the detective unit, narcotics unit, juvenile aid bureau, and the training and accreditation programs. It is a true honor to have Lieutenant Harget serving in this role. It is not only extremely inspirational, he has also displayed time and again his dedication and commitment to the city of Middletown Police Department, and I am without doubt that he will work diligently to guide the Middletown Police Department forward. Lieutenant Patrick Cunningham. Lieutenant Cunningham is a 16-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. He started his career with Middletown Police on June 8, 2005. He's no stranger to Middletown, as he was born and raised here. During the course of his tenure, Lieutenant Cunningham held many positions to include canine handler, neighborhood enhancement officer, tactical response team member, police instructor, canine trainer, and patrol sergeant. As you can see by the many awards displayed on his uniform, Lieutenant Cunningham has been honored with numerous commendations for his excellence in police work, to include being awarded the Police Officer of the Year Award in 2005, 2012, and 2017. He has also received numerous lifesaving awards for his selfless acts of heroism, and is also a Medal of Valor recipient for the lifesaving actions he demonstrated during a 2007 domestic incident call in which the suspect of said call intentionally shot at responding members of the city of Middletown Police Department, striking one of the officers twice. Lieutenant Cunningham has demonstrated time and again his sacrifice, commitment, and dedication to the city of Middletown Police Department, and I'm honored to have him serving in his new role as a patrol lieutenant, as he is now one of the top-ranking members of the Middletown Police Department, where he will be instrumental in guiding our department into the future. Lieutenant George Valentin. Lieutenant Valentin is a 24-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. He started his career with MPD on January 26, 1998. Lieutenant Valentin is currently the most senior member of the police department, and I am grateful that he continues to have the focus and motivation to ensure that all members give 100% on a daily basis. During his tenure, Lieutenant Valentin held many positions to include field training officer, school resource officer, detective, and patrol sergeant. He's also the recipient of numerous awards and commendations, and I'm honored to have him serve in his new role as a patrol lieutenant, one of the top-ranking positions in the Middletown Police Department, where I'm confident he will continue to mold and mentor his subordinates in an effort to best achieve the department's goals. Sergeant Charles Petron. Sergeant Petron is a nine-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. He started his career with Middletown Police on September 10, 2012. Sergeant Petron is a role model to his fellow employees, and during his tenure, Sergeant Petron held many positions to include field training officer, police instructor, master taser instructor, crisis intervention instructor, and he is also the recipient of numerous awards and commendations, and I'm honored to have him serve in his new role as a patrol sergeant, where I know he will strive to do his very best while expecting the same from his subordinates. Sergeant Jordan McInerney. Sergeant McInerney is a nine-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. He started his career with Middletown Police on September 10, 2012. Prior to joining the Middletown Police Department, Sergeant McInerney served in the United States Marine Corps, and I'd like to thank him for his service. During his tenure, Sergeant McInerney held many positions to include canine handler, neighborhood enhancement officer, field training officer, police instructor, firearms instructor, and drill instructor. He is also the recipient of numerous awards, to include the Medal of Valor for his role in an officer-involved shooting in July of 2016, in which he and his fellow officers were confronted by an armed subject. I'm honored to have Sergeant McInerney serve in his new role as patrol sergeant, where I'm confident he will hold his subordinates to the highest standards. Sergeant Kristen Beebe. Sergeant Beebe is a 13-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. Sergeant Beebe started her career with Middletown Police on March 2, 2009. During her tenure, Sergeant Beebe has held many positions to include child passenger safety, sea technician, and dare instructor, where she was able to connect with numerous youth throughout this community, instilling vital educational lessons to assist these youth make proper choices and steer clear of negative pressures as they navigate through their life's journey. Sergeant Beebe has also been instrumental in many of our youth engagement opportunities, and in doing so, she has worked hand-in-hand with the Middletown Recreation Department and the Middletown School District, coming up with creative and exciting ways and opportunities to better connect with the youth of this community. She is also the recipient of several awards and commendations, and I'm confident that she will work hard in her new role as a patrol sergeant, as she guides her subordinates in a manner to best achieve the department's goals. Sergeant Scott Gallagher. Sergeant Gallagher is a 14-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. Sergeant Gallagher started his career with the Middletown Police on March 3, 2008. During his tenure, Sergeant Gallagher held many positions to include field training officer, evidence technician, downtown officer, bicycle officer, and neighborhood enhancement officer. He is also the current PBA president, and he takes this role very seriously, always keeping a balance between the department and its members. Sergeant Gallagher is also the recipient of numerous awards and commendations, and I'm honored to have him serve in his new role as a patrol sergeant, where I'm confident that he will utilize his strong work ethic and drive to ensure his subordinates provide the best police services to the members of this great city. Sergeant Robert McCann. Sergeant McCann is a six-year veteran of the Middletown Police Department. Sergeant McCann began his career with the Middletown Police on April 4, 2016. During his tenure, Sergeant McCann held many positions to include field training officer, bicycle officer, narcotics unit officer, which also included the extremely difficult assignment of being an undercover police officer. Sergeant McCann is a very motivated member of this department, always leading by example and striving to be the best he can in every assignment. He's also the recipient of numerous awards and commendations, and I am confident that he will work hard in his new role as a patrol sergeant, as he guides his subordinates in a manner to best achieve the department's goals. Sergeant Jason Bodett. Sergeant Bodett is a 13-year member of the Middletown Police Department. Sergeant Bodett started his career with Middletown Police on March 2, 2009, and as a patrol officer, Sergeant Bodett was extremely active, constantly being one of the department's top performers in regards to arrests and traffic summons. During his tenure, Sergeant Bodett held many positions to include narcotics unit, field training officer, police instructor, firearms instructor, and taser instructor. Sergeant Bodett is a very motivated member of this department, always leading by example and striving to be the best that he can in every assignment. He's also the recipient of several awards and commendations, and I'm confident he will work hard in his new role as a supervisor of the narcotics unit, where he and his team, in conjunction with our local, state, and federal law enforcement partners, will work diligently to rid the city of the poisonous drugs. The nine men and women, women, that stand before you this evening have put in countless hours preparing themselves for this opportunity. Not just the long hours they committed to studying for their promotional exams, but the hours, days, and years that they have put forth throughout their careers working towards achieving the departmental goals, all while making the city of Middletown a safer community. Each one of these members demonstrated early in their careers their dedication to the city of Middletown Police Department, as well as their desire to move up through the ranks of the police department. Each of them now hold very vital and important leadership positions, where they will be able to utilize their strong work ethics and experience to provide dedication, direction, and in part, knowledge throughout the department. I'm very confident in all of their leadership abilities, and I'm confident they will excel in their new positions. I'd now like to ask Mayor DiStefano as the head of the police commission, and police commissioner and common council president Miguel Rodriguez, along with Lieutenant Dolan to join me as I complete the pinning ceremony of the lieutenants and sergeants. This is really a monumental moment for the Middletown Police Department, considering that we have 16 supervisory roles within the organization. Nine of those roles were replaced with these members within the last, over the last year. So, there's been a lot of movement, and it's all for positive, and I look forward to, you know, what comes from all of this, and hope to see many of you here on more occasions. But, so just in closing, before we do close up, lieutenants Harget, Cunningham, and Valentin, and sergeants Petron, McInerney, Beebe, Gallagher, McCann, and Bodett, your dedication and commitment to the Middletown Police Department is inspiring and still greatly appreciated. I know that each of you have put in countless hours preparing for these promotions, and I commend you for your efforts, your dedication, and your outstanding achievements. In your new supervisory roles, there's no doubt each of you will be faced with new challenges, especially in today's environment, in which policing has undergone significant change and reform. But you have my promise that I will support and assist you every step of the way, and as will all the other dedicated men and women of this organization. I encourage you to stay true to yourselves and true to the strong morals and ethics that have led you on this journey and which have helped you to achieve your new supervisory roles. I ask that you always remember your oath that you took, in which you swore to protect and serve the people of this community. I also ask that you not always, that you always remember why you became a police officer, but also why you chose to take on the additional responsibility of becoming a supervisor. As you enter into these new roles, I implore you to strive for excellence in everything that you do, and excellence from the people you lead. And please, continue to work diligently towards achieving the goals and objectives of the organization while ensuring the safety and security of this great city. Once again, I'd like to congratulate each and every one of you for your accomplishments. Congratulations. This concludes our pinning ceremony. The PBA, along with the honorees, would like to invite all of the guests and family members back to the police department for some light refreshments. And I believe you...
Yes, on behalf of the city of Middletown, I too want to congratulate you on your promotions and the new responsibilities that you're undertaking. Each of you appeared before the police commission, went through interviews, some of you a couple times, and just showed your dedication to your goal and meeting the objectives of the department and of the community. You know, the institution of the police department is strong here in the city of Middletown. The chief referenced bail reform and some of the other issues that are affecting police nationally, but I think locally, from the leadership of chief, he wants you to your leadership, and as lieutenants, formerly sergeants and patrol officers moving into sergeant positions, you've demonstrated a commitment to our community and a commitment that comes through to our residents. And so I wanted to personally thank you and offer, of course, the assistance of our common council and of myself to give you the promise, the resources that are necessary for you to do your jobs and to protect our community and to protect yourselves, which is most important also. So I want to thank you once again, congratulations, and enjoy those light refreshments, because we have a meeting to conduct. So, feel free to leave. So, thank you so much.
All right, we have another special presentation.
Well, it's a good night to be here, and nice to see a lot of people here and celebrating different events in our city. You know, one thing about Middletown, we have a long history, and that history includes several businesses that helped make this community what we are today. A few weeks back, we celebrated 71 years of Tony Bafa's restaurant. A little before that, we had some celebration for some downtown businesses. You know, when people move on, people move on in life, and when you have someone who has accomplished something for our community, such as the Bafa family did and Maria, we, I think it's important that we as a community recognize them. So, just give me a little, Maria's Beauty Fashions is located at 122 Prospect Avenue, and Maria Oliveri Bruny, Bruno, Bruny, I got Bruny in the back, Bruno in the front. She started her cosmetology career in 1965. She attended the Middletown Beauty School on West Main Street, and she opened her hair salon, Maria's Beauty Fashions, at 122 Prospect in April of 72. I was, by the way, in ninth grade, or eighth grade maybe, I think.
I wasn't born yet.
Maria is also friends with my mother-in-law, so, and she's a very kind person. Her career has spanned over 57 years. Maria was known for her expertise in many areas, in permanent waves, hair color theory, and she was proficient in that business that she was in and she had a career out of. She also provided professional services to many TV and radio personalities, something that many people didn't know in the community. Most importantly, she would find, and this is probably the most important part about Maria, that she would financially help clients that were in need of her services. Always willing to lend a hand, she donated her time to the community, to the people, services and monies to local charities and organizations, and that's the type of person she is. Maria's Beauty Fashions served thousands of clients and employed approximately 50 hairdressers over the years. Maria lived and worked out of the same location, raising her daughter Lisa at 122 Prospect Avenue, and Lisa also has a career as a hairdresser at the same location. Now that she is retired, Maria looks forward to shopping, going out to lunch, enjoying life, spending time with Larry. Whatever she wants to do, Maria's gonna do. But, we as a city, I think it's important that we recognize people like Maria, who have given so much to our community, and now it's time for them to enjoy. So Maria, if you would come up, please. On behalf of myself and the common council, we wanted to present you with this little plaque and the key to the city, and recognizing your 50 years of business here in the city of Middletown, and we hope you enjoy your retirement so much. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody. I'm proud to be part of this community. We've served the area for over 50 years, and we're very proud. Thank you. I bless you all.
Congratulations. I don't think there's nobody else. They're the city. Remarks to the mayor, any remarks?
Well, besides spending a couple days in a hurricane...
You're like one of those politicians.
I spend money to go to Florida to sit in a hotel room and enjoy a hurricane. But, that's besides the point. So I've been out of town for a week. I want to thank Walderman Massey for, from what I understand, he was sitting at my desk quite a bit, having like a moment thinking that somehow I wasn't coming back, but I did. So, we threw him out of there immediately this afternoon, and I really don't have much more to report other than I did spend later in the afternoon getting caught up on things, and of course, in touch with people throughout my vacation. But, other than that, I'm just here to answer any questions if you have them. Once again, congratulations to Maria, and also congratulations to all the officers who received their promotions. And I think the chief touched on it, though, it's an important part, is the, this is a significant turnover in administrative personnel for the city at one time in the police department. Nine out of 16, I think it is, is, it's pretty significant, and they're all doing an excellent job, very committed to their positions. And I see, if you see what's going on in other cities in the Mid-Hudson Valley, I think we can appreciate the job that we're doing here. Not that the police and the other departments aren't doing the job, but I think we're really given the resources to the Middletown Police Department to, and we need to stay on top of that, and that's why we do what we do at budget time. We make the appropriate allocations and budget, appropriate programs, and I think, once again, as we're going through our budget, we'll see maybe a few more requests from the Middletown Police Department that we should be strongly considering as we move forward. I do have an executive session request for a personnel matter at some point. I think if you want to take a break after this and allow Maria and her family to go, because the rest of the meeting is very boring.
Yep. We'll take a brief, no questions for the mayor. We'll just take a quick break, and then we'll come back.
All right.
All right, we're back live. So, remarks of departments, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we had a public hearing regarding an application to restore New York for 92 Seward Avenue for Student Center for Fatian College. Look for your support on the resolution tonight to advance this to the application to the state. Also, this week, Hudson Valley Main Street's Pattern for Progress is having a conference at the Paramount Theater, October 6, 9:00 AM. You can still register online. Visit patternforprogress.org, or you could go to our website, the city website. We are searching again for the perfect tree for John F. Dagnan Square, so we begun our search. Let's see if we can get close to what we had last year. And coming to the Paramount, we have the Floyd Experience, we have Abomania, Absolute Queen, and we have Sunny Bivins and the Manhattans with Peaches and Herb. So, all that is, and the farm market is still going in a couple more weeks. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Police chief.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for allowing me to perform the ceremony earlier. It's important to the membership. They work hard, and they deserve to be recognized. What we do have coming up this month, October 18, we're gonna kick it off, is our Leadership Academy. We did run a Leadership Academy in the spring, and then a few months ago, the council approved additional monies to start another second one. So, October 18 will be our go date. It's a 12-week program. We are looking for 25 teen individuals from the community to participate. So, we'll be doing some outreach, trying to get some participants, and we look forward to that opportunity. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
EPW Commissioner. DPW commissioner.
Good evening, council president, council members, mayor. We'll start with reporting on the reservoirs for Alderman Massey, and we're still in a drought condition here in this region. Unfortunately, over the weekend, all that rain missed us, and we did not get any of it for October, but we are at 81% full now, our reservoirs. So hopefully, we'll get rain again soon, and with the significant quantity. Tomorrow, we, the contractor mobilized today for milling and paving Route 211 and Monhagen Avenue, that section that is really not acceptable at all, so hopefully tomorrow, the milling will start, and weather permitting, I see some rain for tomorrow, which is good for the reservoir, but not good for paving and milling. But, and after that, Wednesday, we will have the paving, and Thursday as well, so hopefully that episode will be over, and the council president will not call it rodeo anymore. The traffic operations, as you can see, progress is really moving, and Boyce now is doing a major push before the snow, before the freezing weather to come in, so they're trying to get as much as possible done with the curbs and sidewalks project. New water treatment plant, the new pump station has been commissioned, and we had some issues with figuring out the flows and so on and so forth, but it's all, I believe it's all calibrated now, and we know where the flows are going, and I spent a couple of days there with the guys to figure it all out, and it's all under control, I believe, and can be reported reliably to the Department of Health how much water we're taking. Talking about water treatment plant, we had water main break last night, it was like midnight, the guys came over, they fixed the water main break. In the process of isolating the water main break, valve broke, and it started leaking. So they continued working, 9 o'clock this morning, they took down the valve that broke and replaced it, and now the whole area in there, it's in good shape. So for that, I want to appreciate those men that worked basically from midnight until the end of the shift today, repairing water main breaks and the valve that broke because they were trying to isolate the water main break. And before you, there's gonna be a resolution for the leaves, allowing city residents, should you approve it, to deposit their leaves within four foot from the curb, and then DPW will come in and pick it up. It's gonna be between November 7th until December 2nd. And so again, we, you know, just, we ask people to be conscientious about the safety, and not to make huge piles in there so that kids can be hidden within the piles, God forbid something runs over them, or keep them away from the intersections and so on, just use your judgment, please. And if you see something that is restricting any traffic, call DPW, and do not put anything out there until after November 7th, please. I will conclude, we are getting ready as well to put out forbid Shuangang Reservoir dams, to upgrade them to meet the DEC new regulations. With that, I will conclude my comments.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
City treasurer.
Hi, good evening, I have nothing to report on today.
Any questions for the city treasurer? Thank you. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Just a maintenance update. Currently, our air raider at Davidge is down, there's a leak in the dam, and thank you to Jacob and DPW, they are working to fix that, to restore those water levels at, in the pond, and the air raider will be coming out at the end of this month and next month, and then we're gonna be able to assess better the repairs that are gonna be needed to that air raider, that the motor blew because of the water levels got so low. The water issue at the dog park has been fixed, the fountain was installed, and all is happy again in the dog park. We are in communication with the dog park frequent flyers that are there all the time, and letting them know, we need their help with shutting that water off after everyone is there, 'cause that does cause a lot of the puddling and pooling and the mud there. People go and use the water, leave it running, makes huge mud puddles, but hopefully together, we can work together and alleviate those issues. They're working on the numerous trees that are down with the recent wind that we've had the past few weekends in the reservoir trails. They're working with Orange and Rockland to, once the power is off, to get those trees down, cut up and removed. Will Slayer Field, the storage room is complete, the lights to the bleachers and parking lot are up and complete. Our department did assist Rotolo with the digging of the trenches to complete that project. The bathrooms are open, but we still do need dividers. John Bianchi is hoping to find old ones from somewhere to refurbish them, 'cause new ones are very costly. The practice field is being topsoiled and leveled out, and it will be seeded in a week or two. They're just doing their normal, basic upkeep. I'd like to say congratulations to Matt Leibert, who was promoted to working supervisor of our maintenance department. He's been doing it as John Bianchi's number two for many years, and I do have full confidence in him, that he can continue the great work that John has started with the Parks Department, and I have full confidence that he can continue it. As far as our recreation department, program coordinator Contessa Beckford has started her Leadership Orange class. It's a nine-month program where they meet monthly all throughout Orange County. It's a, she had to apply for the program, and she was accepted. She's had two sessions thus far. She's bringing back knowledge of the county, and all the doings and up-happenings and all the new things going on within the county. She's bringing it back to us, as well as sharing what we, with the city of Middletown and Recreation Department are doing here in Middletown. Last week, I went to, attended the Hudson Valley Leadership Association meeting, I was in Duchess County. It's a pretty far drive, that Teconic State Parkway is very dangerous. However, over the winter, they're very excited. They did ask us to host, Middletown to host one of their winter meetings. They're very interested in seeing our spray pad, the setup, and the whole filter room, and also seeing the ice skating rink, so they are very interested. Pretty much every member that's in the Hudson Valley, none of them really have the refrigerated ice skating rink or the spray pad, so it's something that they're all very interested, and all the rec leaders would like to come and visit and see that as well. All our fall programming is up and running, and we're starting to plan for the winter. And just want to remind everybody, on October 15th, we have our Halloween festivities going on in partnership with the city of Middletown and the YMCA. We're gonna have the parade, Storytime and Craft, and a trunk-or-treat that weekend. And that is all. Any questions?
Question for Ray Lynn. Nice job. Thank you. City clerk.
Good evening, everybody. The city clerk's office was excited to begin accepting online applications for vital records today. It's the first part in my effort to go paperless in the city clerk's office. Vital records are available online, applications available online, you can pay online through the city website. I want to thank Selena St. Laurie for embracing this transition to paperless, online applications, and in the coming weeks, we'll be phasing out applications in the office, from paper to digital applications as well. So, thank you for your support, and thank you, guys.
Question for Rick. Thank you, Rick. Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey. I'd like to thank and congratulate the police department and all those members that were promoted in the penning ceremony. Chief, I think that's very good, it's a nice thing for their families, for them, and for their friends, and for the council to see that. And second, Maria, well Maria and I go back, we were next door neighbors, her family and mine, we go back well over 50 years, very good person, very good family, and we're thankful that she started her business here, is still in business. It's a, it's a good thing for her and a good thing for Middletown, and I'm glad that the mayor recognized her tonight. Thank you. That's all I have. Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. I too would also like to congratulate the police on their promotions, that's a tremendous job, and I'm glad we had an opportunity to do it here, so people can see it. My congratulations also to Maria's Beauty Fashions on 50 years, that's incredible, that's a great run, and like the mayor mentioned, that's part of what makes our city what it is. And finally, our first ward meeting, constituents' meeting, will be, it is October 12th, but we're gonna back the time up to 5:30 to 6:30, so that'll be here in the common council chambers, October 12th, Wednesday, from 5:30 to 6:30. Thank you.
You. Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo the congratulations to the police department. Nine is an amazing number of promotions, and they're all phenomenal and outstanding men and women there. Congratulations to Maria on 50 years in business, that's no small number and no small task. I think anyone who, who looks back at all the businesses you patronize, not many can say they've been around for 50 years, so many congratulations to her. The fire chief, Barber, asked me to remind the council that on October 21st, which is Friday night, will be inspection night at 6:00 p.m., and I'm assuming we'll meet here as usual in the City Hall parking lot. And then just for anyone who will be observing, Yom Kippur, just wishing you a good and an easy fast. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I assume people are watching this on the replay, 'cause Yankees and Mets are both playing tonight, time's running out. We will have our constituents' meeting on next Monday, Columbus Day, on October 10th, and Commissioner Toewell has kindly promised to be there for the meeting, so to answer some questions, and we hope to have a good meeting. We've always met on Columbus Day. Police department in Middletown, it just seems to be second to none. We keep getting and promoting really good officers, and they're so dedicated to the community, and I thank the chief, and I thank them. It's, it just makes this job so much better. I also wish all our Jewish friends a very good Yom Kippur tomorrow and Wednesday. The farmer's market, I'm not sure what the last day is, get a clarification on that. I heard it was the 22nd, the bid website says the 29th, Maria says the 14th, so maybe next, next meeting we'll get clear on that.
Maria, it's the 22nd?
It's the 22nd.
Okay.
Okay, the 22nd, so it's three more weeks. Very good. Next meeting, I'll wait, 'cause this was a busy time, so we'll get updates on some of the things that I get asked about a lot, the things going on. In case you don't know, the building in the psych center that Fatian College is, that we had the public hearing about tonight, that's the old nurse's home, and it's the Tudor Building, and it would be great to see that being used again. And finally, this is the first Monday in October, so you know, Halloween coming up is scary, but it's not as scary as the Supreme Court first Monday in October. Thank you.
Alderman Fosso?
Good evening, I just wanted to congratulate our officer promotions this evening. I'd like to wish Maria a happy retirement, and thank her for her service for the community. On behalf of all the people in the third ward, especially those who live by Pilgrim Estates and Tolo's, et cetera, and anyone who has to drive that stretch of Monhagen, we are all very excited to see that repaved, and that's really all I have this evening. Have a good night.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, kudos to Maria, you know, her profession is a changing landscape, businesses come and go, and it's a two-way street. She's provided a good service, it allowed her to work for 50 years, and the community has supported her, so it's a win-win all the way around. And as far as the officers this evening, congratulations to them as well, as also congrats to the chief for navigating a smooth leadership transition. Thank you. Thanks.
Alderman Francois?
Yes, also, congratulations to our nine officers and their promotion tonight. I mean, being a police officer is a hard job as it is, may God bless him to do the services for the city of Middletown, and congratulations to Maria, 50 years is a long time, God bless her. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
I'd like to also congratulate the officers for their promotions, and on behalf of the community, I'd like to thank them. We're so proud of our police force, like Jerry mentioned, you truly are exemplary, and I'd like to see how we're growing our own talent. Maria's Beauty Fashion, also congratulations, 50 years, I mean, in the community, serving the community, she probably easily went to like the mall, or you know, or to a strip mall in town of Walkeville, but she stayed in Middletown, serving us, and so that must be commended, so thank you very much. And to Jacob's folks, working, you know, a full shift through the night, making sure the water still runs, that we all depend on, you know, thank you, 'cause we know that's a sacrifice, you know, probably weren't home for dinner, they didn't see their kids in the morning, so helping the community out, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, motion to go into the executive session. To discuss employment.
Second?
Alderman Massey, second by Alderman Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well now is that out of the executive session?
Am I adding that resolution?
Yes, you can add that resolution. Okay, new business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman and Massey, authorizing a $15,000 budget transfer from within the fire department's budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing a budget transfer for $500 from within the Parks and Recreation budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, authorizing a budget transfer for $5,200 from within the Golden Area budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, authorizing a $75,296.71 budget transfer from within the Recreation Parks Department.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Massey, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing a $1,250 budget transfer from within the general budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Abstained.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, authorizing a $71,962.3 budget transfer from within the general budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ram Cassoon, seconded by Alderman Johnson, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, to approve an extension of time of six months for two resolutions dated May 4th, 2021, number 9821 and 99-21, for the Presidential Heights Realty subdivision.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner, any discussion. Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Jean Francois?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
Ram Cassoon.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois authorizing the general citywide cleanup period for leaves in the street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? I just would like to say, I know Halloween, we have a lot of leaf piles, kids walk. Maybe next year, we can look at it picking up a little bit earlier than November 7th, but Halloween, you'll see it, there'll be a lot of leaf piles out there. Anyone else?
Roll.
Tobin.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Johnson.